It just, yeah, because it's like right there. Right, it's so close, you can see it from the school.
I'm sure there's a big map because my old car is.
I know, I was gonna say the same thing.
Carol, I was the same way. I came in here like four times today because I'm like even looking at the 11 by 17. It's not enough. I'm gonna do the dance. Barb's super juggler of the coffee. Her coffee's like so full and she can walk from the kitchen to her desk. But like, I mean, look how full that is.
That's crazy. I have that, I would do, I wear it. I wear my coffee on more days than I know. It's terrible.
Cory's desk is very coffee.
I did, it's true. I actually, I actually started buying myself an extra calendar because I would inevitably fill the coffee. It's true.
I can't be trusted with these things.
Just so you know, the camera's on.
Okay.
I actually had, I put those notes together. I was like, wow.
It's a long time. Oh, that's right. We had the sign, right? We had the.
Yeah, they have the cemetery.
Yep. Very handsome, by the way.
Lovely sign.
What cemetery?
Uh.
St. Bridges.
St. Bridges. It's really nice.
It's okay.
I like, it goes well together. I like the white with the green and kind of.
I think it's a lovely sign.
Me too.
I think you've got everything.
I have so much stuff, Barb.
The only thing I didn't see was the.
Yeah, I did not.
From the looks of it, it might be Vicky's.
I'll do a sign.
Yep. Make sure we've got the signs in.
We have a full board here today on this like horrible night of weather. A little chilly. Everyone's just like, yeah, we got business.
Excited to get out of the house.
I didn't even. Wait, is Cam coming?
I thought he was.
Well, we have to do our minutes anyways, so we'll open the meeting. We'll get started on our minutes.
I'm gonna text him while I'm sitting here.
Sounds good. Okay, so we'll open the meeting with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. It's been a few months since we were together. So we have meeting minutes from May. And let's see who is here. So Carol, you were not here, so.
I did look at the minutes.
We had the lovely sign as we were discussing at the church. Very nice. Fascinating how easy it was to just.
Put it in.
Everybody get a chance to look them over?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, do I have a motion to approve? Kate?
Second.
Vicky, all in favor? All right. Um, while we're waiting for Cam, I also, in this packet somewhere, my packet's a little crazier than yours, is the NICOM preliminary executive budget that just came hot off the press today from NICOM. Um, always fascinating to see what the governor's doing with the budget. I will say that I was highly fascinated with the housing section.
The what section?
Housing.
Oh.
Apparently, so we know that the governor is an accessory dwelling unit fan and always trying to get more housing, which I understand. But now if you want to participate in any of the following grants, downtown revitalization initiative, New York Forward program, regional council capital fund, capital projects for the market of the New York program, or the New York Main Street program, you have to become a.
HCR.
A pro-housing community. And I did go and look to see what that entails. And for us, there's different options. Do you know about this, Kate? You probably do.
Little bit, not a lot.
So there's two options. One option is that you have a lot of places for housing and then you have to fill this form out and you say all these places and you attach zoning law, et cetera, et cetera. Then there's option two, which is for people like us who don't have a lot of open housing. I mean, aside from the development, which is still in probate from the estate, we don't have a lot of places where we could add housing. So there is another option and there's a myriad of forms you have to fill out and whatnot. I didn't even get a chance to talk to Courtney at all about this. This was something that the village is going to try to do, but boy, putting the Main Street grant in there sure does make it difficult.
She created a clearinghouse for everybody, one funnel.
Yes. Yep.
It was, it's a. I think a control component.
Yes.
Funnel everybody through one.
One.
Yeah.
Then you can see, you can't, it forces you if you want to go for any of these grants and there, there are a lot of them on the list. AIM staying the same. The AIM funding, water and sewer infrastructure funding. Going to add $500 million over the next two years. Be great if we could get some of that here for our wastewater treatment plant. Video conferencing, apparently going forward, we do not have in place any sort of policy on that. The village doesn't, so. Y'all gotta come in person. So it's just some light reading. Light reading. All right, Gina, well, we're gonna get started.
Dan said he's on his way.
Oh, you want us to wait for him?
Uh, if you want to ask questions, I guess. Is that the only, is the only project on the?
You guys are the only thing on the table. So we, so just as an aside, this is, we have a new zoning law and this is the first time that this board is using this zoning law in this type of capacity. We haven't had really anything since we did the zoning law, sent it up to the village board and it was approved in '21. Is that when it was approved?
October 27.
In 2021. So obviously with COVID and the building constraints, a lot of people weren't doing much. So we've been a little quiet here. So we are going through, it's maybe a little slower for us, so bear with us because there are a lot more things in this zoning law that will pertain to this particular commercial project and we just want to make sure that we are doing everything properly and that we don't miss anything and that, you know, we are very transparent with you on all of the things. So. We're gonna just start off by saying that this is a preliminary sketch planning meeting. It's basically, John's new to our board, so we're gonna explain a little bit too. It's basically a non-binding advisory direction to the applicant. Gina gave us the drawing. It's the, it's one drawing of many that will come with a formal site plan, but basically a general layout of the building, where they want to do parking, you know, different things that were in the zoning law. Gina and I talked about that a little bit. It better helps us and the applicant prepare and our comments and feedback are not construed that any decisions will be made or anything's legally binding. So that's the legal ease of a sketch plan review. This is 8097 Clinton Street Road. The, it's a separate parcel from what the C store is on. The C store is on a separate parcel owned by a different company. Okay, so when we are looking at this parcel, we are only looking at this parcel. We are not looking at the other parcel. So entrances, exits, parking, lighting, you know, runoff, snow removal, all of those things, unless there's an agreement in place and it's okay in our zoning law, which it may or may not be. Hi? Which it may or may not be, then. We, it's just the one parcel. And I did, you know, I did have a question about that because Cam owns both pieces. So I did contact the county planning office. I talked to Felipe and he did, you know, verify that that is the case unless they are merged under one, then it is just this one parcel. So. It's tax map 4 point dash 1 dash 49.1 and it is one of the few parcels that's a general commercial piece. So that's really nice for you guys. It gives you definitely more leeway on the things that you can do on this parcel. So.
It doesn't back up on residential.
And it does not back up on residential, which is nice. It takes away a lot of things that you would have to do extra. So that's really fantastic. Actually, it's just a vacant farmland.
Right.
So. The proposal is to demo the existing building and then erect a new building that will have three businesses on it. Gina, interject anytime.
I did, I don't know if in the drawings I showed what, um, let me just see.
It's the same thing. I just wrote down one.
So I don't know if it's gonna complicate things, but I did bring the floor plan.
Good.
Uh, the proposed.
Yeah.
That of the parcel.
You can get up and look. I mean, like this is interactive.
Right, and to be honest, this is, you know, he's working on getting his price, but this is what we're proposing is the restaurant with the outdoor seating. Do you see the seating, some booths, mannequins, bathrooms, the bathroom room, and then this would be the, you know, the kitchen itself, coolers, everything. And then the idea is, you know, have delivery trucks that come along the back to deliver to all three of the, and then this is, you know, he's chugging for potential residences.
Okay, so this is what is shown on the plan though, with the three businesses.
Yeah, it does have, let me think here.
It's that big, is this building and what's there?
Uh, that's a great question.
I was gonna ask the same thing. There is, it seems.
You know what, it's hard on. Yeah, it's this one here.
Yeah.
And it's definitely bigger, but. Yeah, and I want to say that this corner that we went off of is literally this corner.
This is the same corner.
Yeah, yep, is what, how I started it.
Yeah.
I, I want to say that we actually brought it forward, the six foot here, and I had a benchmark there just to clarify, but really this is.
So look at like the last one that comes in there, that's there.
Right. So it, I mean, it's, it's basically coming out to here. You know, I, I really did not want to lose this parking, but again, when we talked about it thinking, I was thinking it was one parcel that having this one way in, but I don't know how that's gonna.
Well, I talked, when I talked to Felipe at the county planning board.
You at this. Yeah.
Well, this all has to go to DOT. You need to get the permit 33 commercial and they will tell you and us whether or not those are safe, number one. And number two, Felipe thought, looking at the map that he had, because it's gotta go to the county and we can call them and get some information. Some of these parking spaces are actually the right way. So that won't, the DOT will not allow that. But I don't think actually, after talking with Felipe, I don't even think we can discuss parking until the DOT looks at this. Because the problem is that you cannot, you, this is the, these two are the only entrances and frankly, this one coming out is a little unsafe and turning, like coming this way. So, I mean, the DOT will tell us whether or not that's okay. It would, it, it's gotta go there anyways. I have the application and the, do you work with Dan at the DOT? Dan Staley. So Dan Staley would be the one who'd be handling it in the DOT out of Batavia. And so he's actually works Thursdays and Fridays. He retired and then he backed because they couldn't find anybody. So he works on Thursdays and Fridays. I don't know how quickly he turns around something like this, but you might be able to contact him tomorrow. I'll inform you. So I think that generally, I don't know that we can talk about parking, parking lots or anything until we know where the entrances and exits for sure can be coming up. Because this is a state road. So you're gonna need that permit.
Well, the other thing that's kind of tricky with this being the two parcels is normally if this was separate lot, we could, we could line parking however we needed to in here.
Yes.
Um, but because it's just one large parking lot.
It is. But it's, so as I was, as I was looking through the zoning law again, there is, and I gotta look at the page, I wrote it down, there is in the parking portion of it a possible joint parking lot with an adjacent lot. So there may be some options for you. I really need to take a look at it and see. And I wanted to talk to Gary because he is somebody who will interpret it as well, what the interpretation is on that. So it is possible, I, I, not for sure, that you could put some parking there. Even on, even on the other, with, in a maintenance agreement, a shared parking agreement, you might be able to do that, which would alleviate some of the parking that you might have to do for, for Cam. How are you? So, I was just telling Gina, um, we, we were starting to talk about entrances and exits and parking. This does have to go to DOT. The county planning, or for female, we said that it will, you'll need to go to the DOT. And this one has your own state road. You have one entrance on a state road, so they're gonna take a look at it.
So they're not, based on this, they're not counting this as the entrance on this lot?
No, it is.
Right.
I'm just saying, I, you know, they're gonna tell us whether or not, for, for this amount of business that you're gonna do, if these two are gonna be okay curb cuts.
Even though they exist already.
Even though they exist already. And then they, they look at it and say, perfect. You know, I don't, I don't know. I don't know what their parameters are. This is a little problematic because the lights here and they're both close to the light, so I don't know. I don't know what their parameters are, to be perfectly honest, but Dan Staley's a great guy. He's been doing that for a long time.
Isn't there also a 60-foot maintenance somewhere?
You're not supposed to have a driveway 60 feet from an intersection. I think this is probably more than 60, you know.
Did it measure from the side of the intersection or?
Um.
That was one of the questions I wrote down. They didn't know where that 60-foot comes from.
I don't know. That's, that's, that's a higher pay grade than me. That's a Dan Staley pay grade. So. So anyways, a couple of options too, with the joint, the joint parking potential.
I just want to make sure I'm writing stuff down.
Oh, I have, I have handouts for you. I, I, I have homework.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so here's the DOT. Where's the DOT stuff? So this just talks about, says any commercial property that is new or modified access involving any change of use or expansion of the existing development, which obviously it's, it's a new program slash expanded. So that is the info there. That's Dan's number. He's in the office Thursday and Friday. And then that is, I believe, the permit 33 COM application issue list, but you can, it's an August.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, so. So what, I, I don't think we can move forward on the parking and the fire lane. Also, you'll need a traffic study. That's part of our major site plan review. There's, I just took the pages out so you don't have to flip through your book.
So again, as far as the size of the existing, we're kind of using this corner as the corner of what the existing was and that probably comes out small. They were kind of asking the size of the existing compared to the new.
Yeah, I think it was.
It's about, I would say it's. The existing's about one-third the size of what the new is.
Yeah, yeah, that's the way, yeah, that's what it looks like to me too. Yeah, it's, it's gonna be great. It's gonna be great. You know, any development, we like any great development in Virgin.
We do.
We really cleaned that corner up on the other side and we're excited that there's gonna be a new development on your side of the street. He really cleaned up Caesar's Auto.
Oh yeah, somebody new came in.
Yes, yes.
But he do repair.
He's gonna have a repair shop, yeah.
Repair shop, like gold cards and stuff like.
They're pretty good here.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so that, that's it for, so if you, the sooner you can get to Dan, I can't say that enough, like we can't do anything without that permit.
Okay.
And without him saying.
Giving us direction on what we can and can't do.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Felipe insinuated that he could possibly even look at the parking too. So I, I don't know what their role is with that permit, but, you know, he was a good resource for that. Clearly, you know, we've talked about this. We talked about it when the car wash was gonna go in, that it is a little unsafe up there. So when we hear back from the DOT, we want to make the parking safe and also aesthetically pleasing. That's part of our new zoning law is making everything a little more aesthetically pleasing. So we'll look into the parking landscaping slash parking.
Right, some of that was covered into the zoning that, and a lot of that we did try and add with the parking, but I agree, we, if we want to find out what's going on with the.
Yeah, like why, we don't want to spin our wheels and say, oh, we love this, and then they come back and they're like, well, you know, that's not gonna work. So.
Right.
As far as the parking, I think that as soon as we get a real understanding, then we can really look at it and make some good decisions.
Okay.
So, let me see where that was. Page 52, joint and shared parking facilities. Page 52 of your zoning law. That's what I was talking about when I was looking through it. It talks about joint and shared parking facilities that extend across property lines are encouraged as parking can be more efficiently organized in larger areas rather than smaller. Joint off-street parking areas by two or more buildings or uses located on the same lot or adjacent lots is permitted. Shared off-street parking areas, you have to have a shared and joint parking agreement, which I wouldn't think would be a problem since you own both parcels. It's just, you know, this company says it's okay with this company and who's gonna take care of it and who's plowing it. Well, you're probably plowing the whole thing, so. That type of thing. So that might be an option. I'd be interested in what you guys think about, if you're interpreting it the same way I am in the zoning law, which would be a nice option because we didn't think we had that option originally.
Right.
Pretty clear right there.
Yeah.
Be able to.
Yep.
I mean, it says it's in, you know, it's encouraged.
Yep.
So.
So that might be, that might be good.
Well, one thing I noticed, there's no place for trucks. Are you giving up?
Well.
Trucks?
Mostly truck, uh, they don't stay overnight, a lot of them.
No, but just to have dinner at the restaurant.
Yeah, lay back up and, and have that dinner over there. All comes to our store.
Right.
The C store.
Yeah.
Don't you have a still room over here?
It looks like there's grass.
Possibly, if the, depending on the parking.
We can mostly, we get like, every time when I see it, like not more than three, four, five trucks.
Yeah.
Or something like that.
But to accommodate four truck parking, it's some space.
Yeah, yeah. Or they can park across the street and walk over.
They, they mostly do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, because they have the big lot for that.
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, if, if, I think that if you're gonna have tractor trailer parking with all of the activity with three storefronts, I think we'll really have to take a look at where that is. You know, you don't want trucks back. I don't know what your other stores are gonna be, but, you know, you don't want kids and, you know.
So one thing that was not, that I did not find in zoning is green space because there's a, you know, there's quite a bit of it here that we could use up and if we end up doing share to eat this away, I calculated, you know, about 30% of it is green space, but if we can downsize that and put more parking in, you know.
Right.
I just didn't want to have to go for, you know, a number of variances to cover that. You know, at this point, we're not having to do any variance in special, except for the special use permit for the outdoor park, outdoor seating.
Yes, and you'll also need a special use permit for the restaurant. And why? I just found that out myself. Because it's over 2,500 square feet. So if you look in the commercial district under our little like thing here, I don't know, your, our graph, under others says primitive uses over 2,500 square feet need a special use permit. So that's 3,000. So we can do it all together.
Okay.
We can do it all together. It's all part of the site, the site plan would be part of the special use permit, so it can all be done together.
Okay.
That was one of my questions, if either of the other two retail stores would need a special use permit. Like is it a, gonna be one of the businesses that, a business that would need it? I mean, there's a handful.
Right.
Obviously, it's not gonna be a car wash or a gas station, a laundromat. I think we've already, I didn't know.
I don't even know yet.
So if they, if they, it is one of the businesses that does need a special use permit, they would have to come in.
And we'd have to go for that variance.
It wouldn't be a variance. It would just be a special use permit.
Okay.
So the applicant would come in, the, the business owner, Cam would sign off. Say they can come in, there's gonna be a laundromat. They do the special use permit.
Okay.
We have it on file.
Does this Bond Street Municipal owned parking apply? Kitty corner is the, is the commuter lot. Is that municipal, huh?
Yeah. Let's see.
So we're not gonna get into specific stuff with parking?
That is, I, I think it would really not be.
You're wasting time?
I do. Until we know from the DOT, I don't think we really can.
Right. There are a few things in your zoning for parking. It does.
There are, yeah.
Yeah, it does address how many parking spots they want per, and I think that's what we covered and that's why you're seeing, I think it's a total of 26.
I think you only need a 21.
Yeah, I calculated 21.
Okay.
You only need a 21 for, which had to be handicap. Is that right, Gary?
Yes.
And four handicap, 21 plus four?
Nope.
No, including.
Okay, included.
So you could eliminate these spaces, but you know, if the restaurant's gonna be busy.
I did have a question. On the, one, the areas you had accessible area, there's a post in the middle from your porch, in the middle of like two of them.
Well, they would be. They wouldn't have to, they could use any of the other accessible spaces as far as to get up onto that.
It's gonna be flat, flush.
Yeah.
Is that right? Flush to the pavement?
Yeah.
The, the sidewalk is flush to the pavement. There's no curb or anything?
Yeah. If there is a curb, we would have that handicap ramp up to it.
Yes, and in the middle, you have a post.
Right. Well, at this point, I see what you're saying. At this point, this is just.
I know, it's preliminary, but I'm just saying, something to consider when you start laying out where the posts go. They should, to me, they shouldn't be in the middle of a handicap accessible.
Yeah, and we can adjust that.
Yeah, absolutely, but that's why I wanted to point that out. I, I, two out of the three have a post.
Gotcha.
If, it continues to be the parking.
A couple of other notes that I made. I would like, like to review the dimensional requirement on the building itself because I had a couple of questions on that. I gave you all a sheet. So the minimum lot size is 20,000 square feet, which, that's, there's plenty, right? The minimum lot width is 80. I believe that that meets that criteria. I gotta get my thing out here. I gotta get my thing out here.
Yeah, this is gonna get confusing.
It is, it is. So, this is, this front setback's one of my questions, because the front setback is a minimum of 20, a maximum of 50, and I think you're at 60, if I'm not mistaken.
So we're calling the front setback, like, this, like, where the exact corner is. That's where it's, 'cause we're on a corner lot.
Right. Well, you're on a corner lot, so actually...
There's two frontages.
There is two frontages, but the primary frontage is this one.
Okay.
So I don't know, how far back are you from the lot line and then from the right-of-way, state right-of-way?
I am 87 feet.
87?
Yeah. From which point? From the property line?
Property line.
Yeah. Over the property line, yeah.
Okay, so that's something that we would have to look at as a planning board, because that does not...
You write it between 20 and 60?
It says 20 and 50 here, is, is what's in our zoning law. Front setback, minimum 20, maximum 50.
Okay, which would kinda, whatever. I see what you're saying, but I would, yeah, you would actually move it and have less parked, or we would have to shift everything if we wanted to maintain that 50?
Right, right. That's, I'm just bringing up what's in actually our current zoning law and the things that don't meet that.
And that we're calling is the south front, or no, I'm sorry, east front.
So this is the east front?
Okay.
Is that what you're, yeah, I was...
Along Route 19, yes.
That is...
East front is, you're saying, between 20 and 50?
Well, so is, I would say...
Is that the building has to be setback?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I would call the front the north, wait, south front. South front would be the front to me.
Clint Street Road.
Clint Street Road, yes. And south front is 73.
Yes.
So you're just a little over that.
Why do we want a maximum of 50?
Yeah, I was gonna say that it's...
Whether we want it or not, it is in the zoning law, so we certainly can look at it. That's just, I'm just bringing it up that that is...
Yeah.
And then, the side setback you meet is 10, and I don't know if you meet the rear setback, which is 30. I don't know what the rear setback is.
It's marked as 30.
It's marked as 30.
From the line to this corner of the building.
Okay, so it is 30, so you're good there. So it's just the front setback.
Yeah, and that would actually pull that forward and make it any more difficult to get parking or trucks in.
Yeah, I don't disagree. Again, I'm just going over our parameters that are in...
Well, it's such an odd shaped line.
Yeah. Laid out, laid out here.
Especially this one.
Yeah.
Yep.
So that is the only one, the south front?
Well, actually, both fronts. Yeah, the south and the east front.
Yeah.
They both are past the 50 mark.
Yeah.
So is the west, by 10 feet.
Really?
By 10 feet?
Yes.
Well, it's the zoning law, so, I mean, you have to get really close to be able to do that, though.
Why have a maximum?
I think, I think the reason that there is a maximum is so it doesn't get setback so far. Obviously, this parcel is a little bit different, but you don't want things setback so far.
Right, but what if you took like the average? Because on this side is where it is, but over here it's relatively close. So if you sort of average the whole thing, rather than take the shortest...
I'm not saying that it's not okay this way, I'm just pointing at you.
Right, but I mean, to, to say it's 50, it's like, on this side it's this much, this side it's this much, you average those two, you get 50, kind of.
Get something within 50.
So you have to have the minimum 20 setback, right?
You have to have them.
So shouldn't you start from the 20 instead and go to the corner?
Well, I mean, and then you, it's, is it the right-of-way?
Right.
'Cause the right-of-way and the property line are different.
Right.
So...
You would just have to prove it.
Just bringing that up, yeah. Yep.
You have to do this curve build.
Yeah. So, yeah. Then there's the bulk requirements. The maximum building height is 40, or, I'm sorry, yes, the maximum is 40 and the minimum is 30, and I'm not sure that it meets the 30.
Minimum is 30?
Yes.
Yeah, 'cause when I did the side elevation of it, it's only coming up about 20.
Yeah. So, I think the one thing when I was looking at, and this is hard to tell from this angle, because obviously, there's a lot of other angles, but one of the things that the non-residential design criteria is, is to have more architectural, structural ups and downs, basically not one, like, long level. So, one of the thoughts I had was maybe you could make one of the peaks 30 and then keep the other at 20. It talks about that on page 66. It talks about the corner building wrap, and then there's the architectural... Just like the different heights.
Right.
That's something that we spent a lot of time putting in here, so that buildings wouldn't just be...
Right.
Right across. I like that you've made it look like the C store, so that it's kind of one continuous building. I mean, I'm just one planning member, but I'm not opposed to how it looks, but I do think that it needs some more height and different definitions within that. It doesn't even need to be modern as much as it just needs to have different orientations and masses, where there's part that's a little taller, it doesn't all just look like one strip mall. Like, that's what we're trying to...
And one thing you could do, since you have three businesses you're putting in here, if they were three different...
Right.
Designs, kinda not exactly, but you know, if they look like separate buildings.
Right.
A little bit.
You can always change the pitch of the gables coming forward.
Exactly.
More character.
Yeah, that's exactly what this talks about. That would be, I mean, does anybody else have any comments on that? Just a general...
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
Well, and it would define it for people driving by, that there's three businesses here.
Right, yeah, right.
You know, which would necessarily be a bad thing.
The same building, however you wanna take, is only one business in here.
Right, 'cause it used to say having a restaurant and nothing else. So if you had more definition in the buildings, it would be apparent that something else was going on back there.
I don't think you need to reinvent the wheel, but just, you know, some more details architecturally on that. Let's see. One of the things that you, that is required is a landscape plan. There's that whole section of landscaping in Article 8. It will be up to the board, and I think that we should talk about that tonight, whether or not it needs to have stamped drawings by, like, a landscaping professional, or if drawings just from Gina would be enough for us, because that's gonna make a difference for you guys. We do have that ability to say it's okay not to go out and, you know, find the best arborist you know to do.
Right, I'm okay.
Seems like an unnecessary step.
It does. I think we have to wait for parking stuff before we can even think about it, though, right?
I do believe that that's probably, you know, the case, but...
Right. And then after, I mean, it seems like a whole lot of extra for not a lot of space.
Well, that's, yeah, I mean, that's another thing. There's supposed to be flowers along the building and stuff like that, too.
There's a whole land, it lays it out.
I mean, I read it this afternoon, and I was thinking flower boxes and stuff, you know, that's one way to do it, right? Especially if you have that outdoor dining, it'd be nice to, yeah, goof it up a little bit.
Yeah, it's one thing to request it, it's another thing for, to get an employee to maintain it.
Right.
You know, and that's another thing that is...
Bushes and grasses are just another way.
Absolutely.
The 83 South Lake up here, they had to do a landscaping and they, you know, I mean, it's bushes, but it just makes a huge difference, just having bushes and some sort of greenery.
I'm all about landscaping, especially putting more perennials in, so if the maintenance is...
Yes.
You know, it's taken care of.
Yeah.
And even in your, you know, in your zoning, it talked about every 10 spaces having an island.
Yes.
With, you know, some type of tree or landscaping, and I totally understand that.
Yeah. There was, actually, I went back to the car wash, and there was 10 spaces and an island with trees in it, in the car, a car wash sketch that was done, so... But again, like Kate said, I don't think anything can happen until we get, or Carol, I can't remember which one you said it.
'Cause we don't, you don't know what you're dealing with.
Yes, yeah.
Until it's done.
Right, that has a lot to do with it.
I think the traffic flow that the DOT is gonna allow is gonna be huge to reformat what we have, right?
Yes, I agree. I agree. There, we're gonna hope that they move along very quickly.
Right. And the building can be shifted, depending on if we wanna get, you know, if you want semi-trucks to go behind it, or delivery trucks, or however, and still get the adequate parking on the lot with the joint. I'm not worried about that, even the truck parking, we have plenty of that. It's just the traffic flow in...
Yes.
Is gonna be crucial, you know, for that.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. I agree. Couple of things that we talked about in the office that these guys don't even know about. I know that Dave Mason's reached out to our linemen about electric at the, at this project, so, maybe you don't know about that. Churchville, Churchville Electric?
Churchville.
Yeah, they doing your electric?
They did, not at the station, but they did it in my house.
Yeah.
They must be working with Paul Thompson.
Yes.
Oh, is he your builder?
He's getting pricing right now.
He's gonna possibly be, okay, so they're getting pricing on it, yeah. So they did reach out.
Yeah, that's true.
So, they have, he has all that information. I believe the recommendation is 400 amp service on the restaurant, 200 amps on the two businesses. So, our wastewater treatment plant operator, I put up on there, can you, Gary, visit on that one where Chris said he'd like the tanks? The one I wrote all over? God, keep going. Okay, so... So we were discussing the wastewater, the septic tanks. The one for the restaurant, the recommendation is a 2,000 gallon, highway-rated tank. It would need a grease trap, which the owner takes care of.
Right.
So that is a must-have in the restaurant.
I have talked to Paul McCarthy about that already. He did the one for the Dunkin' Donuts.
Okay.
He's in the file for that one as well.
Perfect. And then for the other two businesses, 1,000 gallon tank would be perfectly fine. Okay to have it under the pavement. He thought the placement of those two tanks would make it very easy and less disruptive to the businesses. Come in, pump 'em, get out, super easy, right there, the tanker can just go right in versus having to, you know, go behind the building or whatever.
Right, okay.
So, also on the plan, Gina, if you could add, the C store's septic tank is on that property. Can you...
But it's not here, right?
It is not there. It's not there either?
No, it's not on this one. And then it's probably closer here, right?
This is the C store's septic tank. This is the one we pump. And then this is the clean-out here. I drew these. If you could put those on there, that would be very helpful, 'cause you don't want, we wanna make sure that this is accessible and the clean-out's accessible if we do change anything. So, yeah. So that was, they push it all the way down. It is a way.
It was originally...
It was originally supposed to be, but that's a lift down.
I haven't talked to Thompson about that. Right. Well, the other thing is, we've gotta figure out as far as this parking is concerned, where we can put the treatment parking spaces.
Yeah, and I'm not sure that tractor-trailers will make the cut.
Right, we talked about that.
We did talk about that through there.
I, I really don't mind shifting this as long, you know, to make that work. I think at this point, I'd use the existing corner as the benchmark to go replacement of where this was going, you know? And make sure we just kept all the setbacks the way they needed to be, 30 foot.
Yeah. Now, my, I don't mind the idea of loading and unloading being behind the, because it's tough at the C store, like, they have to load in the middle of the parking lot and then you can't see.
Right, right.
I don't know what you'd call it, smaller size delivery truck, not a semi, but a max size.
Right, yeah, like a box truck.
Could that box truck make that turn?
I may add to that, too.
I don't, I don't, that would be difficult, but...
I'll go over that with him here on the, as far as the radius that we need to make the trucks.
Make the...
And also, there's no sidewalk on that side.
Yes, the box trucks.
Where the parking area, I know it might change, but there's no sidewalk there, and you have a lot of parking, no sidewalk. But you have a sidewalk on the other side, and I don't know if you would walk on it.
Oh, I see, I see what you're saying, yeah.
You know, there's a lot of people, and there's a lot, that's gonna be more traffic there.
Force them to walk through the parking lot, instead of up to a sidewalk.
So if they just want...
Okay, we can continue the sidewalk on the other side.
That would make sense, actually.
I think the one reason I started that is for the outdoor seating, just so it had separation from people coming onto that.
Yeah, but it'd be better people walking by than cars.
Right. And also, is there gonna be an entrance to the outdoor seating from the...
That's completely up to the business, you know?
That seems, right. But I do think it'd be good to have a sidewalk.
Yeah, that's a good, yeah.
If, if this lane, right, used in one area.
Yeah, we'll have to think about that. We'll have to see what the DOT says, because if you do end up putting parking across from where the delivery lane would be, that could be problematic, with people crossing and then delivery trucks coming around the corner.
Well, you gotta remember, it's not like they're coming all day long.
Right.
It's invisibility. I mean, you can't put tree corners.
Yeah, right.
But I just thought, so, a lot of times, you know, the trash deliveries, they wanna get in and get out before the stores are even open, so...
Would the dumpster be for all the businesses? Would the dumpster be for all the businesses?
Yes.
Okay, what else, what else does, Gina, do you have more questions?
So you're saying you prefer two dumpster locations?
Oh, you prefer two dumpsters, you're not saying one? I wondered if they were gonna walk the trash all the way over there. So, so another dumpster would have to be in there with screening?
The other thing that I'm trying, I'd prefer to move that building forward, is I would prefer all the mechanicals, you know, the HVAC systems on the back, so it doesn't take away from the look in the front.[1788.74]
You know, put bollards around that before they, and then everything's in the back. They do have the Dunkin' Donuts, but there are still some things in the front as well. And I would prefer to put it all in the back of the building.
I love that, actually.
Are they located on the design now or is that?
There is green space behind that four. It does, I don't know if I actually got the units. Says six foot wide sidewalk, but that would be where I would put those units. It's, I wouldn't put a sidewalk, it would be the, you know, the
The pads for the?
Yes, yes. Yeah.
Well, and if you're going taller with the big stuff, you can also do some, something that brings too.
Yes and no. And you can, with the trusses, you can put it in the truss systems per unit. We did that to the building in Attica, the insurance building. They put a lot of their mechanicals right in the truss system. We did attic trusses in a certain areas in order for them to access it and reach the mechanicals up there. But the AC units still do better outside, yeah.
Yeah, that would be great.
Well, the Tomcatavia has issues. Yours is up to X. It's one thing to put the furnace up there, but to get the AC, you want that, you want that house outside. And generators are into that.
Yeah. Yeah, that's the age old thing. The kids walking through from the village.
Yeah, there's no sidewalk.
There's no sidewalk, yeah.
And then all of a sudden, there's nothing.
I mean, there's no sidewalk in the village even up to there.
We kept trying, it's expensive.
It is expensive.
Words of sale and going down.
Yep.
There's no sidewalk.
I know. I know, it is expensive.
It'd be nice if we could put in a little bit every year.
Yeah.
Just go a little farther.
Carol, you got anything else?
No.
More questions? Kate?
No, I feel like it's really the DOT, like, once the DOT comes back, then we can really jing in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
These are kind of minor little things.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it helps to, when I go back and reformat.
Yep. John, anything else? Steven?
I think it's exciting to have a
I do, too.
I think it's an exciting project.
Yeah.
I think outdoor seating and restaurant bridging, I think is wonderful. I think it's, so, you know, that's wonderful. But the, the details of it, again, I think we gotta, gotta leave.
Gary? Anything?
Back to the DOT.
Are you here to make us put residential housing in one of these?
We're on this topic.
Yeah.
Okay. No special use permit for that.
So, yeah, I agree with Kate. It's a very exciting project. We're excited to have a project. Where we are. But we're excited what's happening up there, honestly. Between 83 South Lake getting cleaned up and, you know, looking better and, and across the street, like I said, the C store is always busy. So, you know, we're really looking forward to having some more commerce up there. Certainly the traffic's there, that's for sure. So we're excited about it. We're excited about it. So I guess the plan moving forward is that the one decision that the, and I'll take a motion on it, do we have a motion to, I don't know how to say this, not have a super expensive landscaping plan done? Not have to have a licensed landscaper do the landscaping plan? Do we have a motion? Okay, Vicki? Carol and Kate? All in favor? Okay, so that is the one thing that, that we did decide tonight. So I will wait to hear from you back. Certainly we can have another preliminary sketch, plan meeting if we don't hear from the DOT. If you want to come in, we can talk about it some more, if you make changes or if you want to wait.
Yeah, I'd like to hear what the DOT says and get the recommendations or what they're going to require, make those revisions on the plans and then, you know, kind of tweak what I need to before we meet again.
Okay, so do you want to have another preliminary after you tweak the whole thing?
Yeah, if, yeah, if you need to have a, kind of a true preliminary to move forward.
Yeah, I think that'd probably be the best case scenario. So, you know, it, best case scenario, DOT gets back and we can have another preliminary with the tweaks in February. Then we could go to a full site plan with all, you know, the survey, the utilities, the landscaping plan, all of that in March with a public hearing. This does have to go to the county. So if we did get there by March, the Genesee County Planning Board, I have to get stuff over there by the 4th of April, so we would be able to do that.
Okay.
And then possibly, possibly depending on what the county says, if we can get there, you know, have some action on April 17th at our meeting.
What is the timeframe for the February meeting? When?
February meeting, I would need something by the 12th.
Okay.
But we've already had a preliminary, so, you know, that's the technical date. So if you get me something by the 12th, even if you get me something else a little later in the week, that would be okay.
And then the meeting is scheduled for what date?
Uh, 21st.
Okay.
21st. I do have a little paperwork to give you guys, too.
7P, correct? The meetings are 7.
Yep. I'm just going to scoot in here for a second. Just so you have, see, I'm tabloinking. There's our fee schedule. These are the deadlines for the referrals, just so you know. I have to get it over to the county planning board, so I have to get it over April 4th for their April 11th meeting.
Okay.
You'll need a demolition permit at some point in time. I will take that. Here is the application for commercial electric. We'll need that, even though they know. Yeah, some of it, yeah, yeah. But we'll have to have all these in-house. And then this is the sewer connection. This comes with a fee. I talked to Courtney today. There's a capital hookup fee, $1,250. We're going to ask you guys to fill out two of these, but we're only going to take one capital hookup fee because it's for one building, but we want to separate the two tanks to get them in the files properly so we know the ones that this tank and the ones that tank. So the only additional cost would be the inspection and there's $150 and $50 fee, but we are not charging you guys the extra capital. So this is a sign one. For whoever's doing this, whether it's going to be your contractor or not, I already pulled this information for you. The annual water consumption for the family restaurant is 2,060 gallons. 2,064. It's late. So 723 gallons a day, that does ask down here, so just so that's a good gauge. I don't know if the restaurant's bigger. I think they haven't figured that out, but with the outdoor seating, it sounds like a little bit.
I, I think it is bigger. I don't know what he has proceeding down there now.
I think so. And then these are for whoever's going to be your tenants. This is a sign law and we have sign permits that have to be approved before any signs go on.
Okay.
And
For signs.
For signs.
You were looking into that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was looking into that, but I haven't heard anything from the day design guy.
Okay. So I will say that the general commercial, they did make a change and you can have internally illuminated signs there, like you do on your store now, where it's lit from inside. It's the only zone, place in the whole village that you can have internally lit signs. If you wanted to go with partially internally, partially externally with like, you know, making it more historic, that's completely up to you. Like down here, they have all the, what are those called?
Light tub?
Yeah. Yes, 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 yes.
But the sign we have right now
The freestanding.
We want to change that, too.
Oh, okay. Yeah, so that'll
It's going to be same looking like you have by the C store building.
Do they have, I mean, we can locate that on the site plan.
Yeah.
And you don't need the drawings of that as well or?
For the, yeah, when the sign, when the time comes.
Okay.
So if you want to do that all at the same time.
Right, so not just the signs on the building, but also if you want some freestanding sign.
Yeah. It's all there, that's a pretty straightforward sign law.
Okay.
And it shows exactly.
Okay.
Okay, so GC, you get the internally illuminated.
Now, this one here that you marked out.
Yeah.
Do you want me to take a picture of it or can I take this?
Um, you can take it. You can take it. Let me see, yeah, because I think we talked about all of that. Yeah, I just want to make sure, yeah, these, put your hands.
Put your hand up here.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's, it was great to be able to talk to, like, to talk about where the tanks would be good. I mean, just getting that done ahead of time.
Yep.
I think would be great. And this 2,000 gallon needs to be highway rated because I don't know if they both need to be highway rated, but definitely the 2,000, he said. Maybe telling the parking spots. That's probably mine.
But again, if we switch this over, we may end up with parking here and come out further.
Yeah, so that might need to be highway rated, too. But anyways, so, yeah, you can take this one.
Okay.
All right, that was a great discussion, I think.
Yes.
Any other questions?
Anybody? Yeah, so Gina, let me know what Dan says.
Okay.
I will also call Dan, too, and say, hey, they're coming. Dan, he's worked hard on Thursdays and Fridays. I called, I tried to call him today, but he was out of the office.
Okay. Got you.
Yeah. But he'll be there tomorrow, so I'll call him. If I call him and you call him, then maybe
Maybe squeaky wheel.
That's right. That's right. Because I, I mean, I really would love to get this going for you guys so that, you know, come spring when it's, the weather's nice, that
Right.
You know.
It also depends on how people do, how they, they're going to be, you know, the construction people.
Yeah. Yeah.
I don't know, they all know you. They might bump, bump things around for you.
All right, well, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Every night.
You, too. Okay. Yeah, I think, are we done? Okay, do you have a motion to adjourn? Oh, David. Second? Carol, all in favor? All right. Turn the camera off.
Jeff, do you ever have to turn the camera off?
Yeah.
Do you know how to turn the camera off, Jeff?
I remember doing it once.
Well, you can try again. Probably a button just like Yeah. Click on it and it'll stop.
Hit the right button, Jack. Hit the right button.
Turn the screen. It's just flowers. Or just turn it off.
Yeah, or unplug it.
How'd that do?
Batteries still on, so.